There we go. Members of the audience, if you haven't already grabbed an agenda, there are agendas at the back of the room. The meeting of the Kern County Planning Commission is called to order. Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ashley. Commissioner Frank.
Here.
Commissioner Judge.
Here.
Commissioner Louie.
Here.
Commissioner Sprague.
Here.
Mr. Hall.
Here.
Ms. Oviott. Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Ms. Simon.
Here.
Mr. McNamara.
Here.
Very good. Well, I guess the first thing, I wanted to welcome Commissioner Judge to the Planning Commission. We are all very happy to have you here and looking forward to you serving. And if you have anything you want to say, please go ahead.
Well, first and foremost, I really appreciate that. Thank you. I'm also very excited to be part of this Planning Commission, serving with my fellow commissioners here. And most of all, I'm humbled and excited to serve Kern County and all my citizens here and the people of this community. So, thank you for the opportunities.
Thank you and welcome.
You're welcome.
Are there any additional Commissioner or staff announcements? No one is shaking their head yes, so I'll move forward. You all have received a copy of the minutes of our last meeting. If there are no corrections, I'd entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion.
Second.
No comments?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now, we're moving on to items withdrawn or requests for continuance. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have five items this evening that staff has recommended a continuance on. The first item is CUP 59, map 102. Our applicant is RGF Properties LLC. I would note that on your agenda, it says that this project will be continued to September 27th. The staff report distributed indicates that the project would be continued until October 11th. Staff would like this project to be continued to October 11th is the date that we intended to have that project continued to. The second item is GPA 1, map 9-9. The applicant is Juan Ponce. Staff's recommendation is to continue this project until October 11th, 2018. The third case is Zone Change Case Number 27, map 103-25. PD Plan Number 23, map 103-25. Our applicant is Teresa Catano Casa. Staff recommends that project be continued until September 27th, 2018. Case Number 4 is CUP 51, map 81. The applicant is NSM Recycling, Inc. by TJ Cross Engineers. The recommendation is to continue that project to September 27th, 2018. And the final item is CUP 65, map 142. Our applicant is Raj Paul Singh. Staff recommendation is to continue that project until October 11th, 2018. That completes the items for cases withdrawn or requests for continuance.
All right, I will entertain a motion regarding these items.
Motion to continue those items?
Second.
Please cash your votes.
Four ayes, one absent. Motion carries.
Now, we're moving on to the consent agenda. I understand that there might be one person in the audience that would like to speak on Item 8 and ask a question. If that's the case, you can come up to the podium now before we move forward with the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, actually, let me read the agenda first and then that way you understand what the request is before that happens.
Okay. So, go ahead and read the consent agenda, Mr. Murphy. Thanks.
Thank you. So, these are items that are scheduled before your commission, which are being recommended for approval by staff, and the applicant has been informed of any special conditions and has no objection. The hearing on these items may be expedited if no member of the commission or audience wishes to comment or ask any questions on the case. We have four items this evening that are on the consent calendar. The first is Case Number 6. This is Track 6376. Our applicant is Oasis Rose LLC. This project is located on the southeast corner of 30th Street West and Felsite Avenue in the Rosamond area. The request before your commission is an extension of time for a period of three years for tentative Track 6376, which proposed to divide a 10-acre site into 37 lots that ranged in size from 6,000 square feet net to 11,482 square feet net for residential use. That project also includes a 20,419 square foot net sum plot and four limited design variations. The staff recommendation is to approve a three-year extension of time to expire on February 2nd, 2022, subject to the original conditions of approval and adopt the original findings as set forth in the draft resolution. The next item on consent is Case Number 7. This is Conditional Use Permit 59, map 165. The applicant for this project is Robert Cummings. The project is located at 25147 Banducci Road in the Tehachpia area. The request before your commission is the CUP that will allow an event venue in an A district. I would note that I have two clarifications I would like to make to the conditions of approval on that particular item. The first, I would just note that Condition 7B5 should actually just be renumbered to 7C. That was just a numbering error. The second condition that I would like to change is 7B6A. First, I would like to indicate that that should be read 7DA. That's a numbering issue. But the other issue is that condition requires the installation of a 4.5-foot split rail fence around the project site, which must be continually maintained. Based on the adjacent agricultural grazing that takes place on that property, staff would just like to cross off the 4.5-foot split rail requirement. So, we still need a fencing. It just does not have to be a split rail. So, staff would recommend changes to that condition as well. But, the recommendation, it'd be to improve the conditional use permit in accordance with the recommended conditions and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution that includes those changes written in the record today. Those actions not to become effective until such time as the project proponent has processed and received approval from the Kern County Board of Supervisors, cancel the existing Williamson Act land use contract within the event venue boundaries, and pay all of the appropriate cancellation fees.
Madam Chairman, a real question for you. Murphy, go over the fence thing with me again, because I remember this from the past where we argued a missionary fence on partial, a portion. Is this the one next to the trailer park?
Chairman Sprague, this is the first time this case has come before your commission. Basically, it's a 40-acre project site, and the event venue would take place on 2.5 acres within that site. There's currently a fence that is barbed wire, and it helps to keep out the grazing animals on the property from where this event venue is located. Staff realized after we had put the conditions together that if we required the project proponent to change that barbed wire portion of the fence to a split rail fence, that that would not be able to adequately keep the grazing animals from entering into the event venue portion of the project site.
So, the question is, what will it be?
Fence to be determined and maintained by the property owner. We just did not specify that it had to be a split rail fence.
Doesn't staff have to approve what type of fence goes in there and the height?
This is not a fence that's located next to a main road or anything along those lines. You know, if the applicant choose to keep barbed wire, we would be fine with that as it helps maintain. Our biggest concern was just defining where the event venue could take place versus the remaining 38 acres of the project, or 38 acres of the project site.
Okay, thank you.
All right. The next case on consent is Case Number 8. This is Track 7260. Our applicant is Cassie and Betty Detloff by Wiley Hughes Servane. This project is located on the east side of Highway 33 at Blackwells Village Drive in the Blackwells Corner area. The project before your commission is tentative track map number 7260, proposing to divide a 47.31 acre site into 42 lots ranging in size from 7,200 square feet net to 8,930 square feet net and a 37.48 acre designated remainder. The staff recommendation is to approve tentative track map in accordance with the recommended conditions of approval and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution. And finally, the last case on consent is Case Number 10. This is Track 6375. Our applicant is Gene Roberson by DeWalt Corporation. This project is located on North Hills Drive, approximately 500 feet east of North Chester Avenue Extension in the Bakersfield area. The request is an extension of time for a period of three years for vesting tentative track number 6376, which proposed to divide a 37.7 acre site into 100 lots. Those lots range in size from 8,856 square feet net to 31,365 square feet net for residential use. That project includes five limited design variations and a development variation to the land division ordinance that would allow the deletion of the required six-foot-high solid machinery wall in the M1 district. The staff recommendation is to adopt the mitigation measure monitoring program, approving the three-year extension of time to expire on August 19th, 2021, subject to the original conditions of approval, with the inclusion of an additional condition requiring the payment of traffic impact fees in effect at the time the building permits are applied for on any lot within the recorded mapper phase, and adopt the findings as set forth in Resolution Number 157-6. That completes the reading of the consent calendar tonight.
And so, is there, if there's anybody here that would like to remove one of these items from the consent calendar?
You might want to, might want to be more clear, just to say if somebody wants to talk about one of the items, since how we, we knew.
Would, if there's anybody here that would like to speak to one of these items?
I guess not. Item 6, 7, 8, or 10.
If not, I will entertain a motion.
Motion as read into the record. Items 6, 7, 8, 10.
Second.
Cash your votes.
Four ayes, one absent. Motion carries.
Right of appeal?
Yes. Those four items, those action is considered final, so they are subject to appeal to, as a result of that. For projects where the Planning Commission action is final, those actions are subject to appeal to the Board of Supervisors by any interested person, and no development proposed by any application may be authorized until after the final date of approval. An appeal may be filed with the Kern County Planning Natural Resources Department, located at 2700 M Street, Suite 100 in Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $540 on forms available at the Planning Natural Resources Department. For Item Number 7, the filing must be made within 14 days of and including the date of this hearing. For tracks maps, which apply for Items 6, 8, and 10, the appeal must be filed within 10 days from the date of decision of the Planning Commission. Any such appeal must be accompanied by the appeal fee of $540. If no appeal is received, the action by the Planning Commission is considered final.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public presentations. If there's anyone here that wishes to address the commission on a matter that is not on our agenda tonight but within our jurisdiction, you're welcome to come to the front of the room at this point. Doesn't look like we have any this evening. Now, we're moving on to public hearings. Item Number 5. Who is handling that?
Madam Chair, good evening. Thank you. And Commissioners, I would like to introduce to my right Carlos Rojas, who is the project planner for Recology. He is going to be presenting the staff report this evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. The project before your commission this evening is a request for the expansion and continued use of a composting facility on 197 acres that was originally approved by the Kern County Board of Supervisors and has been in operation since 1993 and with a modification to the conditional use permit, 27 map 143. The proposed project is located at 661 North Wheeler Ridge Road, approximately four and a half miles east of Highway 99, at East Bear Mountain Boulevard, and approximately four and a half miles west of the city of Arvin in central Kern County. The project site is extensively disturbed and developed with the current operations of the existing compost facility. The majority of the site, of the site is sown for exclusive agriculture, with a portion being A1 for limited agriculture. None of the project parcels are subject to a Williamson Act land use contract. The land uses surrounding the project site consists of the Lamont Public Utility District Wastewater Treatment Facility to the north and east, a 100-acre dairy farm to the west, and agricultural uses to the west and east. The Arvin landfill, now closed, is located to the southeast of the project site, across North Wheeler Ridge Road. To facilitate the development of the proposed expansion of the composting facility, the applicant is requesting approval of the following land use applications. A, an amendment to the Kern County general plan to change approximately 197 acres from the existing 8.1 intensive agriculture and existing 8.3 extensive agriculture designation to a 3.7 other waste facilities' land use designation. B, modification to the existing conditional use permit number 27, map 143, to include modifications to current operations and site boundaries. The applicant is proposing modifications to the current operations to include the following. Number 1, adding a force duration system during the active composting phase to increase efficiency, reduce odor, and reduce the processing space and time requirements. Number 2, increasing the amount of food waste from commercial and residential sources that can be received at the site and removing the current CUP limitations on sources just within the city of Arvin and Kern County. Number 3, expanding approved feedstocks to include digestate as well as manure, and updating the approved feedstock list to be consistent with the calorie cycle definitions. Number 4, removing feedstock sublimits and implementing an overall blanket tonnage limit for an approved feedstock. Number 5, clarifying the facility boundary to include acreage use for composting operations and acreage use for existing supporting facilities, such as truck wash, office space, and material processing equipment. Number 6, allowing for additional material processing capabilities, including pre-processing of feedstock materials and grinding. Number 7, allowing for wood mulching and collar operations. Number 8, increasing the vehicle limit from 150 trucks to an average of 500 trucks per day, and peak of 605 trucks per day, and subsequently onsite fueling of the facility vehicles. All these components are further described in detail in your staff report tonight. To evaluate the environmental impacts of the project, an EIR was prepared in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. As required by CEQA, the EIR includes appropriate review, analysis, and mitigation measures to address the environmental impacts of the proposed project. A draft EIR was prepared and circulated for a 45-day review period from May 22nd to July 6th, 2018. The EIR contains 40 mitigation measures to reduce significant impacts from the project and a mitigation measure monitoring program that is attached to your staff report this evening. During the circulation of the draft EIR, the staff received 11 written comments on the draft EIR from state, local agencies, and interested parties. As required by CEQA, responses to these comments were prepared and provided to the commenters and to your commission. Volume 3, Response to Comments, was circulated 14 days prior to this hearing. The staff report includes the summary of the comments that led to minor clarifications to the EIR. It is noted that a majority of the comments received were standard in nature and resulting in slight clarifications to the EIR. These changes are considered minor and did not change any conclusions identifying the analysis of the EIR. The staff's conclusions and recommendations. The final EIR includes 40 mitigation measures that provide for the protection of the environment and provide funding for impacts to public services. CEQA requires that all feasible and reasonable mitigation measures be imposed on projects to reduce impacts of projects on the environment. Changes to reflect clarifications to the final EIR as appropriate, having made in Sections 15091, Finding of Facts, Section 15093, Statement of Overriding Considerations, and mitigation measure monitoring program for this project. The Kern County general plan, land use designation of 3.7 other waste facilities, is intended for non-hazardous waste facility, which manage and process various types of waste materials but do not have any onsite disposal, including composting facilities. Amending, amending the land use designation to 3.7 and facilitating consistency with associated goals, policies, and implementation measures will create consistency between the zoning ordinance and the Kern County general plan for the project site. With regard to the requested modification to the conditional use permit, the project is located within the exclusive agriculture zone district, with a portion being sown A1 for limited agriculture, which allows green waste collection, recovery, and composting facilities, with approval of a CUP, and considers this use to be compatible with ongoing agricultural activities in the area. Pursuant to Section 19.104.40 of the zoning ordinance, approval of a CUP require the following findings: to include consistency with the general plan in zone districts, listen as a conditional use, as a conditionally permitted use, and that the use will not be determined to the health, safety, and welfare of the public. The staff concludes overall, this project is cited in a location that can be considered favorable for the expansion of the existing facility. The project is located on the unincorporated southern area of Kern County, which is especially appropriate for the proposed project due to a lack of dense urban environment. Additionally, this site has available access using existing roads in the area, which means that a minimal number of road improvements will be implemented as direct result of the project. Therefore, the staff recommends your commission recommend the Board of Supervisors to certify the environmental impact report, adopt Section 15091, Finding of Facts, adopt Section 15093, Statement of Overriding Considerations, adopt mitigation measure monitoring program, approve general plan amendment as requested, approve modification of conditional use permits subject to conditions, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution. That concludes staff's presentation. The staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Do you have a question, Commissioner Sprague?
I do.
Okay.
I have concern on the increase of trucks from 150 to over 600, and the road conditions that are out there now, and what the county intends to do. I don't see Mr. Maxwell in the audience, who is usually here to answer traffic questions and, and information that we need. So, does staff have information as to whether they contacted the Roads Department, Mr. Maxwell, or anyone in the department and staff regarding the traffic situation increase and what it would do to the road structure and infrastructure in the Arvin area, as trucks come in, probably routed through Bear Mountain Road, I would guess? But I'd like to understand how the, how they're going to deal with that increased traffic in addition to the traffic that's already there, because I see it as very complicated.
We actually have a representative from Public Works here this evening, Mr. Paul Candelaria, and he can actually speak to the project.
Okay. Could we ask him to come to the microphone?
I am currently asking him to come to the podium.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Can I ask, can I ask for a point of clarification, Commissioner Sprague?
Sure.
Through the chair?
Sure.
You have the floor.
Through the chair to staff. It's my understanding from the staff report, and correct me if I'm wrong, that what's happening now is arriving and exiting is about 100, it's 150 plus 75, so it's about 225. Is that correct? And it's going up to in and out of a total of 500. So, you're asking, they're asking to not go from 150 to 600, but maybe from 225 to 500?
But it's still over 600.
Right.
Yeah, so that's.
Just so we can get, it's not four times more, it's maybe two times more around?
Yeah, but that's difficult with loaded trucks in and out on the road infrastructure.
So, let, staff's over there looking for those numbers, I think. And I'm sorry, I don't remember your name.
That's fine.
She said it too quick. Can you state it and spell it for the record?
Sure. My name is Paul Candelaria. It's P-A-U-L-C-A-N-D-E-L-A-R-I-A, and I work for the Public Works Department under Warren Maxwell. And based on the traffic study that was done for this EIR, the traffic at the moment is, is good. It's not, let's see, how can I say this? It is not impacting State Route 223 or Wheeler Ridge. And as it continues to grow and traffic has increased, part of the mitigation measures is for them to redo a traffic study to see what impacts they do have. And as that goes on, and as the impacts do create a, some, in some problems at 223 and Wheeler Ridge or further elsewhere or along that stretch of road, there are mitigation measures in place to make them implement, to correct them, to get traffic back to what it was prior.
Do you know what the flow of traffic is now? Is it A, B, C, or D?
I believe it's a level service C.
C, okay.
And currently, there's also a project. And currently, there's also a project at two twenty-three and Wheeler Ridge, sorry, proposed by Caltrans to put in a roundabout.
So, existing is C, but with the additional trucks, will it go to D?
Well, that's where the mitigation measure will come in and see what impacts and if the level of service is impacted at all.
And Traffic Department is on board with this?
Yes.
Recommending?
Yes, we will end up looking, we look at the traffic study, and whatever comes in when they do their increase in traffic, then another traffic study will be done and impacts will be looked at.
So, Roads Department doesn't think this will affect the existing traffic flow through there and complicate it at all?
Currently at the moment, no, it is fine, based on the traffic study that was...
When you add the trucks and traffic to the...
Right. As it increases, another study will be done and impacts will be assessed at that time.
And if we got to that point, and that assessment says we've got to do the roads, who puts the money out to improve the road structure and infrastructure?
They will have to pay a proportionate share of the improvements.
And then the county would pay the rest?
Yes.
And do we know what that percentage is?
I do not know at the moment. I do not remember what the traffic study had proposed.
So, staff, this won't come back before us if it's approved tonight. I'm just, I have a major concern about the traffic patterns that are out there existing and the traffic patterns that we're going to add to it with that many loaded trucks in and out of there. So, I'm looking for some answers about, is it going to be health, safety, and welfare issues? Is it safe for the general public, especially the residents of Arvin? Because I want to protect them in this expansion. But I have concerns.
I understand.
And I want those concerns aired, and I would like to have them aired in public.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes, Commissioner Sprague through the chair, I can help answer some of that in terms of how the mitigation measure would work. The mitigation measure in which Mr. Candelaria referred to is mitigation measure four thirteen dash three. It can be found on page thirty-four of your monitoring program. It's mitigation measure thirty-eight. So, beginning in twenty twenty-five and every two-year interval thereafter, the project proponent shall cause a qualified traffic engineer to complete a weekday peak hour traffic count at the intersection of Wheeler Ridge Bear Mountain Boulevard, State two twenty-three. At such time as the traffic operating conditions fall to worse than LOSC, the project proponent shall pay its fair share toward funding and installation of a traffic signal or a roundabout in consultation with Caltrans District Six and, at county direction, additional lane capacity for separate left and right turn lane channelization for all approaches into the intersection. So, I mean, this is approach we have used on other projects in the past where there's a possibility that the traffic may increase over time. We have a very specific threshold, level of service C, that has been identified in the mitigation measure. At any point in time that any traffic generated as a result of this project starts to qualify that level of service to where it would fall below that, based on these studies that would be required, that is when these additional improvements would kick in, which could include their fair share of payment, but then also these travel signalization improvements and the right and left turn channelization to help ensure that the access to and from the site is appropriate and that we continue to operate at a level that's appropriate for the surrounding area.
So, in the traffic analysis, you said traffic signal or roundabout. Would the survey, if the survey comes back and says the signal and a roundabout is necessary there, then it would be implied?
Commissioner Sprague through the chair. Generally speaking, Caltrans is sometimes wanting a roundabout, sometimes a traffic signal, the cost for difference reach, that's kind of an ongoing discussion between them, and I think it would be determined if it's under their jurisdiction as to which is the appropriate requirement.
Okay. And then the county would review that and make recommendations?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir, for coming to the podium.
Is the applicant present? Would you like to come up and make a statement? Please state and spell your last name for the record.
Good evening, Chairwoman members. Eric Patashner from Ecology. First, I'd like to thank Planning Department staff for working with us hand-in-hand through this process. It's been an eye-opening experience dealing with such a complicated project, but your professionalism's been very much appreciated. This is a site that we're excited about. We think it's going to provide a valuable resource to the county. Organics recycling mandates are coming from the state to all counties in California. This is going to be a great outlet for that material here in the county. We've created partnerships with the local communities of Arvin and Lamont. We're going to take this site that has had a very troubled past, make a hopeful future for it, and we just would appreciate your consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak in support of the project? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Any commissioners have questions for the applicant? Sorry to make you get up again if you have to. Doesn't look like it. And with that, I will close the public hearing and look for comments or action from the commission.
Well, Madam Chair, I have many concerns. I've followed this thing years and years, where it went, how it operated, the legal action that it went through, the heartbreak and pain the county went through to challenge that situation. And knowing the site, it has been a problem site. I'm hoping that it gets cleaned up and it follows the rules and regulations as put forth by the county. And if not, I guess we can complain again and go back to square one. But it does need to be fixed. This may be a good fix. I just have some reluctance with it because I want to make sure that the public is protected as far as health, safety, welfare, and I want to do it right this time and make sure that Arvin and the citizens of Kern County are protected. So, with that, I would listen to other commissioner comments.
Commissioner Sprague through the chair, is it the number of trucks on the roadway that's your main concern?
Well, there's many issues. There's issues that I haven't really been, I haven't had any input from staff as far as how they want to regulate air emissions and odorless and tilling of the soils and the water well they're putting in and what the compost could do as far as saturation of the soils and going into the water table and possibly affecting the Arvin water scenario. There are questions in my mind that I still have in my mind that I've tried to get answers for that I haven't. So I have some concern. The gentleman that spoke at the podium, I would happily ask him to come back and explain some of that. Has there been studies to all that effect to where the public is protected?
Can I, Mr. Hall? Do I need to reopen the public hearing if we're going to bring him back up? Can I do that?
You, well, you can reopen the public hearing if you'd like. You could also just ask him questions, since how he's being directed questions during board comment.
Okay. We'll do it that way then. Sir, would you?
Madam.
Go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
As you guys are making your way up.
Commissioner Sprague through the chair, I just want to kind of give a global perspective on some of the comments that you have made, and I appreciate your oversight and following this. There's a couple of things to note here. One, this is a new applicant that was not involved with the facility at any time before. This applicant has worked very diligently with the surrounding community to make sure that the community knows the product that they produce, how they go about their operations. And again, as they had mentioned, there is an agreement that's been in place, and they have been a very good neighbor to the community so far. Regarding some of your overarching concerns and where this may have been addressed a little bit more, this time, we went through a full, complete, comprehensive environmental impact report that looked at the project as a whole. The facility up until here had kind of been developed over years, and we had a project in place, then it was modified, and it continued to change and evolve, and this particular process allowed us to look at it comprehensively to really make sure that all these concerns have been addressed on a global level. The other difference is that, and they would be able to speak to it much more than I would be able to, but the process by which the composting is done, they have used aeratic static piles, and the whole process has changed that greatly reduces any of the air emissions that are associated with the facility. And all that has been come in place when this operator has taken over the facility. So I do think that it's good to let them give you a kind of a summary of that, but from a global perspective, I believe that those are some of the reasons why we don't have as many concerns as we had previously as this project had moved forward in the past.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mr., do you have some specific questions for the applicant?
No. I set forth what my thoughts were.
Sorry, Eric Patashner again from Ecology, and one thing I did not speak to is who Ecology is, and that may help answer some questions off the bat. I also have Charbel Eid here, who's the general manager to the site and can speak specifically to any best management practice we are incorporating now. But Ecology is the largest organics processor on the West Coast. We operate nine sites between California, Oregon, and Washington. Aeratic static pile, best technologies that are being used today, we are employing them in other sites. These are the technologies that we want to bring to this site. When it comes to air emissions, when it comes to protecting the water table through our leachate collection system, we are going to bring the best that technology has to offer. And we've made that commitment to the community through a good neighbor agreement, and it's really what we do everywhere else. So we are confident that we will be able to meet the very high standards that we not only set for ourselves, but what the state sets through regulatory processes. So if there's any specific questions, we're happy to answer what we're doing on the site.
Well, I just want assurance that the highest technology that we have today is used in this project and that the county can understand that and get on board with it, along with the city of Arvin, and bless the project. I just don't want to put anybody in danger. And so those are my concerns, and that's why I'm asking the questions I'm asking, because that's my job as a planning commissioner. So, if you've got other speakers, I would love to hear them.
Sure.
Commissioners, nice to see you. I'm Jennifer Hernandez from Holland and I represent Ecology. I did the work again on the environmental impact report, which is kind of my part of the world. It's not a small document. It's not a document normally prepared for a modification of an existing facility. This really was a comprehensive ground-up, all topics, all issues addressed. It's also, I think, noteworthy that, you know, sometimes applicants come up and we're negotiating to the last minute with who the stakeholders are or whatever. By the time Ecology contacted me a couple of years ago to get me on board to help, they had already engaged with the community. They have a good neighbor agreement that's been in effect already. There's already been community stakeholder meetings and outreach, and the reason we don't have objections is because of that kind of commitment to community relations. Also, you know, this project, as is normal now practice in Kern County, has a mandate to fully mitigate air emissions through a developer mitigation agreement with the air district. That's brand-new. It covers trucking emissions as well as operational emissions. Independent of the later-breaking traffic report and corrective action process if the traffic, truck trips actually cause an issue, there's an upfront requirement to pave that is a full applicant requirement, so the street will be resurfaced before starting expanded operations. There's quite an elaborate odor program, and as Eric mentioned, this is a kind of technology, this aeration technology, which minimizes both air emissions and odors, but more importantly, is now, as he's mentioned, mandated by the state, not as a waste management tool, but as a greenhouse gas reduction measure. And so this is an environmentally beneficial activity that is having to meet the most modern standards and didn't just drop in, but has been a good neighbor, I think, as attested to by the Good Neighbor Agreement aptly titled, and the fact that they've worked so intensely with the community, including Center for Race, Poverty, and the Environment and others that have been very active on this site under past ownership in Arvin and elsewhere. So I just wanted to give that additional background, and then, you know, the weight of the documents kind of speaks to itself. There's a water supply assessment. It's the full nine yards, if that helps.
Well, I appreciate you telling the story there. So, is there anyone else like to speak on behalf of this project?
Hello. My name is Charbel Eid. I'll spell it first and last name is S-H-A-R-B-E-L, last name is EID. I'm the general manager at the facility. I've been there about a year and a half or so now, and, you know, I can speak to the operation of the facility. My primary focus has really been around cleanliness of the facility and safety. We have ongoing safety meetings every single month to ensure that our employees are working safe in addition, that we're keeping the public safe. I have three supervisors that work at the facility. They each are tasked with conducting five safety observations per week, so that means we see roughly about fifty percent of our employees every week. We do a ten-to-fifteen-minute observation on them to ensure they're working safe. We share that with them. If there's any corrective measures need be taken, we address them in the moment. The other part that I really focused on too is really cleaning up the site, making sure that anything that was there previously that doesn't belong or doesn't need to be there, we've been in the process of really removing that material and cleaning up as much of the facility as we can.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any additional commissioner comments?
I think the environmental review was comprehensive. I think the mitigation measures are appropriate, sufficient, and I can support the proposal.
I just want to commend you all for working with the local community and for doing that for a long period of time. So, we're happy to have you here in Kern County and appreciate your willingness to work with folks and ensure that you are running a safe, clean operation. So, thank you.
And just on my part, I'd like to mention for you guys as well on your project here, going through mitigation measures, as you mentioned earlier, there's a quite extensive list of things that are required of your facility and things where most citizens are concerned with, things like odor, things like that. I understand you guys have an impact mitigation, odor mitigation plan in place that's going to be required of you guys, and along with the San Francisco Police and Control Board to reduce organic gases. So, reading through the mitigation measures, it seems like you guys have done a lot of work, along with staff here, to make sure that you take the community's best intentions in place here. So I appreciate you guys for doing that.
I'd entertain a motion at this point.
Well, if nobody else will, I will. It looks like everybody's on the same page on this project, including the city of Arvin. That's important to me. And so I would make a motion to approve the project as submitted by staff into the record.
I'll second.
Cast your votes, please.
For our eyes and an absent, motion carries.
And with that, our last item is adjournment. Our next meeting is... Can somebody tell me when it is? The twenty-seventh. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.